Whatever you're ready.
You want it?
Yep. Yeah, we're ready. Hey, Trevor.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, thanks. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Tuesday, May the 16th, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I'm going to welcome everybody in the courtroom or the meeting room this morning, or this afternoon, and everyone online. If everyone would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Pastor Pearl will lead us in the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bag your heads, please. Lord God, we have much to give you thanks for during this season. We give you thanks for the milder temperatures and the beauty of spring. We give you thanks for all the EMS personnel that are going to be remembered today. We give you thanks if there are businesses here long enough that we can have anniversaries for them. We give you thanks, Lord, that you provide funds for us to create a budget and continue to give the commissioners wisdom as they determine those things. We just ask your blessing on the county and on the commissioners in particular. Thank you, Lord. Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Knoll, any additions, corrections, or deletions to the public meeting agenda?
No, sir, there are none.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
A motion. We have a second.
Second.
Motion of a second. Agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Motion of a second. Minutes approved by mutual consent. First item on the agenda, we do have a proclamation. This is for National EMS Week, and I'll go ahead and invite the whole crew up here. We've got a lot of representatives from our EMS services throughout the county. I want to thank them for coming in today. Thank them for all that they do. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then John, Wayne, whoever, if you guys have any comments you'd like to make. So EMS Week is where emergency care begins this year, May 21st through the 27th, 2023, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating an Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Garrett County, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed by Commissioners Titchnell, Savage, and myself. Gentlemen, thank you all very much for all that you do for all of our communities in the county. So with that, does anybody have anything they want to say?
Sure. We're extremely appreciative of all the support that the commissioners gives our farm rescue community. We hear it time and time again. We have a blended system with career and volunteers, and, you know, I reach out to the public. If you have any time at all, please consider volunteering at your local departments, because it is really a gap that we need to fill. It's a lot of training, a lot of commitment, and a lot of time away from your family, but, you know, thank you very much.
And we're grateful for you guys to make that commitment. Who would like to have the proclamation? Wayne, did you have something you wanted to say?
I've got two things that I'd like to address. Number one, this next week, of course, is EMS Week, and part of that celebration is on Thursday, the 25th, is also Stop the Bleed Day, which a campaign across the country to help laypeople and first responders do exactly that. Stop hemorrhaging at places where there's been violence or there's been injury and somebody's hemorrhaging. So you'll be seeing it out in the social media and so forth, but at the Emergency Operations Center in McHenry, 32 Outfitters Way, on Thursday at 6:30, we're going to be hosting public Stop the Bleed training. If anybody is interested in that, show up. We'd be happy to do that. The second thing is, we'd like to formally announce and recognize that Jason Robeson, paramedic Jason Robeson, has been with us since, for several years.
2015.
Yeah, 2015. Has just recently been promoted, and he is now a lieutenant with our department. So we'd like to recognize that.
All right. You guys smile pretty for the paparazzi. That's all I have. All right. Thank you guys very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do you want to get a picture of him and spread the flags or anything?
Okay.
Should we just do that afterward?
Yeah, we can. Sarah, you just think, you want to stand there real quick. Who wants her anything? All right. The next item on the agenda is a recognition for Rayleigh Design Center. I saw those guys wander in. A little tardy, but nonetheless.
Right on time.
Yeah.
We wrote the door.
All right, all right. So I'll actually turn this over to Connor.
Thank you, Paul. It's a hard act to follow all these great men. Thank you, guys, for what you do. But as Paul said, my name is Connor Norman. I'm the Business Development Specialist here for Garrett County Economic Development, and I'll tell you, a large part of my job is going out each and every day to connect with our businesses. Sometimes that can be hard, because we're working on challenges, we're working on things that can really, you know, things that stack up against our businesses. But one pleasurable thing about the job is we do get to celebrate those milestones along with our businesses as they make those big deal moments. And part of that is celebrating our milestone program. Here with us today, we have a business that has been doing it for 10 years. It is my absolute pleasure to recognize Rayleigh Design Center. They've got a lot on their plate. They've been doing a lot these last 10 years, and they've got so much more coming up in their neck of the woods. I'm going to let them tell you a little more about that. But at this moment, I'm going to turn it over to our commissioners for the reading of their proclamation and a few words.
All right. Well, it is with great pleasure that on May the 16th, 2023, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners give this commendation to Rayleigh Design Center on their 10th anniversary. We, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, our citizens, are happy to join together to extend our sincerest congratulations to Rayleigh Design Center on its 10th anniversary. Founded in 2008, the Rayleigh family, following a 50-year legacy of serial entrepreneurship and investment in our community, opened this business to serve the interior design and furnishing needs of our community and the surrounding region. Congratulations to the Rayleigh family on this milestone and the exemplary work and professionalism of the past 10 years. May these years be an inspiration for continued success. Signed by Commissioners Titchnell, Savage, and myself. And I will invite you guys up. We appreciate your investment in our community.
Well, thank you all so much for this. We really appreciate it. As Connor, sorry.
Keep going, you're good.
As Connor mentioned a little bit, we do have a full furniture retail store that you can come in and shop at with a gift area as well. We also offer design services, and we can help you outfit, you know, a room, a whole home, anything like that. We also have some exciting new things coming up this summer. We have about five new businesses that have never had a location in Garrett County that we're offering spaces to sort of do, call it an incubator space, but get them up and running, and have a full shopping center there. So we're kind of in the vein of maybe a Thomas or Davis feel with outside market shopping. There's several different retail stores going in, a coffee shop, a bakery, things like that, so you can have a whole experience there.
Excellent. Yeah. Mike, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to, I do want to add that, just to piggyback on what Jessie said, she and her mother Nancy want to help local businesses, and Jessie has directed me this past year to help find businesses that suit those spaces well. The building we're in is in Friendsville, but, you know, it's very close to the lake. It's kind of in between those two places. And the intention is really to foster a great environment for them to succeed there and stay. And so we appreciate anyone's support and your continued support, and we'd love for you to stop by and see it as it develops.
Congratulations, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2023-4. This is the Off-Road Vehicle Ordinance amended. We had a public hearing about this last meeting. We've received no comments on this. We did receive one positive comment. We've received no negative feedback on this. This ordinance that I'll entertain a motion on in just a second will add off-road motorcycles to all train vehicles and snowmobiles in the language of what a person may operate on Garrett County highways, and will increase the length that they can travel to five miles. And this subject to the regulations, only off-road vehicles as defined by the Transportation Article of the Annotated Code. This does not, I was asked a couple of weeks ago, there must be a rumor out there, some information out there, the price of the sticker that you have to have to sticker your off-road vehicle to stay within the regulations. The cost did not go up. It's still the same $25 fee. All that's changing is the length that a person can travel, which now is five miles, stay consistent with the state law, and it does add off-road motorcycles, which was not in the previous iteration of this ordinance. Having said all of that, we already had the public hearing. We talked about the comments. Any questions from the commission? If there are none, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-4 in the amending the operation of off-road vehicles and highways?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion. A second question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution approved, and I will need all of your signatures on that, please. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a couple of bid awards. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir. Our first bid is Bid Number 23-0427, hauling of refuse and/or recycling materials. This involves hauling materials from the collection sites back to the landfill. Two bids were received. First one from Sunrise Sanitation Services in the amount of $224,714.75, and Perry's Solid Waste Disposal in the amount of $196,169.44. The Purchasing Department is recommending awarding the bid to the apparent low bidder, Perry's Solid Waste Disposal, in the amount of $196,169.44.
All right. And we will actually take these separately today due to the nature of them. Are there any questions for Mr. Knoll on Bid Number 23-0427, hauling refuse and/or recycled materials? If there are none, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation to award the bid to the low bidder, Perry's Solid Waste Disposal?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
The second one is Bid Number 23-0427SC, Snowy Creek Bridge. That's G19. This was for concrete abutment construction. This is to construct abutments on both sides of the river for the Snowy Creek Bridge placement. We received one bid from Concrete General Incorporated in the amount of $4,330,517. This bid is significantly over budget, and the recommendation is to reject the bid at this time, and we're going to revise the scope of work and go out for another bid.
Questions? All right. Can I get a motion to accept the recommendation to reject the bid for the Snowy Creek Bridge?
Motion to reject the bid.
We have a motion to reject the bid. We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do think it is important to reiterate that this does not mean the Snowy Creek Bridge will not be done. We're just going to rewrite the RFP and redo the bid process. We already have the bridge.
Correct.
This is just for the abutments. So more to come on that later on. Right now, the next item on the agenda is to open up a public hearing on the Maryland Department of Community Development Block Grant applications, and in order to do that, I will need a motion to close the public meeting and open a public hearing. All right. I have a motion to close the public meeting and open a public hearing. So we are now in a public hearing, and Dwayne, I will turn it over to you as you are the one with the information.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Edwards. I, you know, I don't really have a lot of information in terms of what, how the department, because I wasn't a part of that. And I think Cindy Sharon had set up the hearing. But the Community Development Block Grant is administered through the State of Maryland Housing and Community Development, and a part of that block grant requires a public hearing by any local jurisdiction who is considering submitting a request for funds. And that, the purpose of that hearing is to solicit needs and ideas for projects that respond to those needs from the public. And so in this case, the Garrett County Community Action Committee is addressing two needs that we have identified, and we have projects that we're going to propose to the county that you submit as a part of that application. The first area that we want, we'd like to address is, we have, for the last couple of years, we have had a project called Capable, and I should first of all introduce the two experts who are here. So if I screw up or don't know any answers, Shawna Humphrey, who's our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, is here, and Katie Shadel, who directs our homeownership and the Pathway Program, is here. And both of those are, you know, a lot more knowledgeable than I am. But the one, what I started saying is, we've been working on a project which is intended to allow low-income homeowners who are elderly or have a disability to stay at home, maintain a high quality of life, address health issues, safety issues, by making improvements to their home based on an assessment that an occupational therapist and a nurse, a registered nurse, do. It's a team that is developed where we have an RN, and an occupational therapist, and a contractor looking at a home of a low-income homeowner, and if there is something that they can do to improve that home, make that, and allow that individual to stay in their home, we go through a process where the homeowner establishes a plan, goals, and then the occupational therapist, the RN, work with that homeowner in terms of their daily living activities. And for the last two years, we've been operating a project that has been funded, one by the Weinberg Foundation, and also in part by the Community Development Block Grant. We think the Weinberg money is ending as of this calendar year, and we'd like to continue the program at its current level by asking CDBG to fund the whole project. And that will probably come in at about $325,000 at this point. We're still doing some final numbers, but, and I don't think the applications are due to the state until June.
September, September.
So we have a little time. But in any case, that's a project that has had a lot of, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from individuals who have been participating in that. And it's a little different, because for the first time, we have some professional health people working with us and with the contractor about how they can improve the living conditions and situations that those individuals have. The second project is deals with homeownership and allow, you know, housing, as everyone knows, has been a hot topic in our community. And we have, for the last couple of years, of course, administered the Pathway to Homeownership program for the county, the county's down payment assistance. But one of the areas that we haven't been able to address in the last couple of years, a number of years ago, we did, when the federal government had money for it, but that money ended, is allow, focus on households who are at least 80% of median or less, and who have to have a deeper down payment assistance than what we can provide under the Pathway Program. So we're proposing a first-time homebuyer program, but we can find only the first-time buyers in this case, and it would be confined to households who are less than 80%, 80% or less of median income. And, you know, Katie has been working with those individuals. She thinks that they're probably almost 30 households who we could, who, if we had had a deeper, a larger down payment assistance, could have qualified. As we know, housing costs have gone up, so the down payment has gone up somewhat also. The Pathway Program has been extraordinarily popular. I mean, you know, we have waiting lists and so overprescribed almost, and in fact, I think we ran out of money about a month ago, Katie, right?
April.
April. Already. So, but what we are thinking about trying to do is stack, we have the Pathway Program, and if we get the CDBG money, CDBG money, we would stack some of that down payment so that we could stretch the money and increase the number of households that are served. And we are thinking right now, it's coming in at about $240,000, I think, on that program. Two, how old was it, Katie?
230.
230. Wow, I'm sorry. I told you she's.
Good thing you brought her.
Well, I was trying to kick a little extra in there for someone's salary. The, anyway, the, we, when we were running the first-time homebuyer program under almost the same guidelines a number of years ago, funded by HUD at the time, we did almost 400 households, and these were individual households who were coming in at that income bracket. So there is a demand, there's a need, and there is actually a, I think, a number of households who we could get qualified into a home, the first home ever, in terms of purchase, if we could get this money. So that's, that's, those are the two projects over the, what we're, you know, trying to respond to those need areas.
Dwayne, is that median income, Garrett County median income, state median, or national?
They call it area median income, which in their definition means county. But, you know, and the median income right now, I think, and I never quite keep up with it, but it's very close to around $54,000 per household. And there's also an adjustment on household size, so, you know, it's not exact. But, but that's kind of where the target is. If you take 80% of 54, you come up with a ballpark figure. So I don't know. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners? This is a public hearing. Are there any questions from the public on this program? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
What's the award ceiling on the CDBG funds?
Say again, please.
The award ceiling.
Yeah. The county is allowed, or any jurisdiction, local jurisdiction, local government, could be a town or the county, has a ceiling of $800,000, and that's what the maximum is that you can request.
Is there anybody else in the county going after CDBG funds?
Yeah. I'm not aware of that, and so at this point, I don't think there is.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So comments, if anybody has any comments, comments on this will be received until June 5th, and then we'll vote to approve. Now, that only gives you guys two days to turn that over, but you're prepared for that, I'm assuming.
Assuming you'll vote to approve, we'll just proceed to get ready.
Okay. Smart, smart move. All right. If there are no other questions, again, comments will be received up through June 5th. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting?
So moved.
All right. Public hearing is closed. We're back in the public meeting, and we have come to the conclusion of the action items on the agenda. It is time for public comment and questions. Just a couple of announcements before we do that, and then just a reminder that at the conclusion and adjournment of the public meeting, we will have the budget presentation by our finance department for the 2024 operating and capital budget. I want to remind everybody, the budget adoption will take place on June 5th at our next meeting, which is here, 4 o'clock. That is when the budget adoption will be done, and I know I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but we will take comments on the comprehensive budget, which will be presented here shortly up until June 5th. The only other thing that I would like to announce, if you have not seen, a major accomplishment by one of our employees, I do want to publicly recognize Cheryl DeBarry, who recently has been named to the Daily Record's Maryland's Top 100 Women for 2023, and reading from the press release from the Daily Record. Congratulations, Cheryl DeBarry, being recognized in the Top 100 Women list for 2023. Cheryl's inclusion on this list reflects her exceptional talent, dedication, and significant impact in charting new territory in Garrett County. And if you're unfamiliar with Cheryl's work, Cheryl was hired here a while ago to work in the, to be a liaison for agriculture and work in economic development. She has since sort of transitioned into broadband expansion. I say this all the time, and I know these guys agree, our IT department is nationally renowned for kind of setting the model of how to expand broadband in a rural environment, and Cheryl's a big part of that. And so it's great to see her be recognized for her work, because she has accomplished a lot. The whole IT department has accomplished a lot. You know, I understand broadband is still a major issue. We've been talking about it, I think, all the nine years that Larry and I have been here, and it's still an issue we're trying to tackle today, but we are significantly further along today than we were nine years ago because of innovative ideas that Nathaniel and Cheryl and everyone else over there have come up with. So kudos to Cheryl. Much deserved recognition for her work. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
I have a question for you. When you're talking about this median income, does that include local, state, and federal salaries?
If it is, I think that income that Dwayne just mentioned, I think refers to the median income of the people in this county regardless of where that comes from. So that would be completely comprehensive.
Because I think there would be a considerable difference between that figure and the figure of the average Garrett County. Correct me if I'm wrong there, but there's some pretty significant jobs through state through state, local, and federal government that would have a pretty big impact on that.
For sure.
And I think that's something that really needs to be looked hard at when you're looking at a budget. As you're saying, and when we're talking about that, the other thing I would like to mention is I really believe, at this point, I'm not criticizing anybody's abilities. But I think a lot of times, outside eyes will give fresh perspective on formulating a budget. I don't know the entire process you went through, but I think there needs to be some type of restraint here because it's coming down to the point to where, when it's passed on, the bucket's running empty for a lot of people in Garrett County. And I think that's something that really needs to be looked at hard. It almost reminds me of some of the rhetoric we're getting on a national level, it's like unlimited income. And, but I think that's something that really needs to come to the fore.
Thank you, Butch. Anyone else? Hearing nothing, can I get a motion to adjourn the public meeting?
I know.
All right, the public meeting is adjourned, and I'll turn it over to the finance department for the budget presentation. Buckle up. It's about to get exciting. It's about to get exciting, all right? Set up here. You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Cody, you can put your light back on if you want. Okay. We are... Oh, yeah, Cody, this is Cody's PC, so I'll let him get the software running. Need to use my? I don't think.
Your old Microsoft sitting there.
I was gonna say, it's, it's... Not responding, as it always goes. Give me a second here, get that. Are you plugged in or are you on Wi-Fi? It's just the program itself is not responding. I'm gonna use the backup, see if it responds.
Want to talk about something else there, Paul? How about them Orioles?
It is shocking. Coming alive? Is that you?
Yep.
You want to try mine? He's gonna grab the backup real quick. They did test it earlier, I'll attest to that. Yeah, it's, it's a Microsoft issue here, just sitting here churning. Still not responding. Let's just switch it out. Oh, there it is. It's got an update. I was gonna say, just a second, I'll walk back and... It's coming alive. Okay. See if we're on there now, Kevin. There we go. Thank you, Cody. Here's your, if you want this. All right, welcome to the fiscal year 2024 budget presentation. I'm gonna start where I always start and sort of go over the revenue. We're gonna look at the third column over, the percentage change, and focus, do a lot, focus on that column mainly. I do want to point out, on this first slide here, we're gonna get more granular, but we're projecting a 5.69% increase in overall operating revenue for fiscal year '24. On the same slide, you'll see last year, we used some reserves of $8,150,000 to balance the budget. That was mainly for capital items. So the overall budget's going down by $2.7 million. The operating and capital budget included there. So we're looking at a 2.67 reduction in overall budget. I do want to break down the revenue in a more granular level. So I always point out our big categories. Last year was the Big 11, we now have the Big 12. I try to pull out any category that's over $1 million. The new category this year, obviously, is this investment income. Last year, we had $95,000 budgeted, and we're projecting about $1.6 million next year for a change of $1.5 million. Anyway, looking at the first line item, real property tax, you'll see about a $5.6 million increase in that line. That shouldn't come as a big surprise. If you were here at the constant yield hearing a couple of weeks ago, constant yield rate was .9652. The commissioners are proposing to keep the tax rate the same at a dollar .056 per 100. At that constant yield hearing, that figure I quoted was about $4.7 million of additional revenue. That figure did not include penalty and interest, which is included in this category. It did not also include any new construction, which we're projecting about $800,000 of new construction. We get those figures from the local State Department Assessment and Taxation. They keep those conservative. They look at the properties that are in the pipeline, and I ask them to keep that as conservative as possible. Looking at the next line item, income tax. We take a three-year trend average on that figure, and we're projecting that'll be about $16.25 million for next year. Some of the factors we take into account, of course, is wage inflation. I think many of you know that the state of Maryland has accelerated the minimum wage to $15 per hour beginning January 1 of 2024. That wasn't supposed to go into effect until January of '25. So they accelerated that. That'll have some effect on this number, so we take that into account. In the past, we've looked at the capital gains on investments in this, in this account. We've also looked at unemployment rates. And we try to get a handle on people that have become full-time residents here because if you become a full-time resident, we also get your income tax. So that's where we're putting that, we're a million-dollar increase on income tax. Accommodation tax, I'll come back to that one. Public utility tax, showing a slight growth. Again, I get some projections from the State Department of Assessment and Taxation Downstate. That doesn't come from the local office, it comes from the Downstate office. Personal property tax, that's where the windmills are. That has a declining base, as I've pointed out in the past. It depreciates about 3.33% per year over a 30-year period and caps out at 25 years. Let's see, let's go to these categories here, disparity grant, forestry and parks, highway users. Those are all figures that come from the state. They're sort of hardcoded, they give those to me. So I won't hit on those, but you'll see slight increases in most of those categories. Disparity grant is, they cap that. We should be getting about $2.5 million more, but they cap that several years in legislation. So we've been at the $2.5 million figure for several years now. Accommodations tax, recrodation tax, transfer tax. We've seen large surpluses in those accounts over the past two years. And a lot of people say, well, you're not accurately projecting those. And I feel that we are coming back down to pre-COVID normal level. We were able to project the accommodations tax back in the day, come within $300,000 of that. We've seen it as high as $7 million during the COVID. You can't bake that into your operations. We use that excess money for reserves to fund some capital projects and such. So accommodations, we're projecting at $4 million. It still has a $400,000 increase. Recrodation and transfer tax is 1.8. They both are showing about a $50,000 increase. I will note that recrodation tax, just back in 2019, was around $1.8 million. So I think we're seeing those drop because interest rates are, I think prime is 8.25%, 8.25% today. Fed funds rate is 5.25% today, that's on the investment side. So I think because of the interest rates, I think that slowed down what investors are doing with the transfer of property. So overall, in these big 12 categories, it makes up 94% of our budget. We're seeing about a 10.36% increase. I do want to stop here and explain sort of the property tax. I know the constant yield hearing has been open, and we did get some public commentary, really not a lot. Do you have the number, Mr. Knoll?
We received 19 letters.
About 19 letters. Most of those letters are coming from District 18. And I personally talked to, had some people come in my office to talk this over a little bit, to try to explain to them that a lot of the lakefront properties are seeing 100% increase on the lakefront. So I just gave them a scenario here. Your assessment was half a million, let's say it was a lakefront property, and it doubled to $1 million. Here's what they were paying on the tax. Again, this, this half a million is phased in over a three-year period. So there is, there is some relief there. It's not hitting them all at one time, it is phased in over three years. But their tax was $5280 under this scenario. At the end of three years, it would be $10,560. So their tax bill doubles. That's what the issue is, their tax bill is doubling. If we would, our tax rate's $1.56 per 100, right, currently. If we would have dropped the rate to a dollar, I'm just using easy math here, their bill would have been $10,000 still. They would have saved $560 over a three-year period. So I think, I think what they're asking us to do is cut our tax rate in half so they don't have, their tax bill is not doubling. Their tax bill is still gonna double even if we would have dropped to a dollar our tax rate or the constant yield rate. So really, the only savings that they're looking at is $560,000. I just wanted to point that out because there's a lot of misconception on that. I mean, us dropping the tax rate, sure, it'll help them a little bit, but I think they're really asking us to cut it in half to, to help them have zero increase over that time. So one, one of the things we, we thought about is the homestead tax credit, really giving a break to the residents here in Garrett County because a lot of their increases have been, I mean, they had significant increases in their assessments, too. I think the residential, backing out the lake area, the watershed area, I think the average was around 18% to 25% is what the normal resident increase. Okay, so we were like, let's try to help the homeowners out. So in a non-resident situation, if you had a $200,000 home and it increased 25,000 or 25% or $50,000, a non-resident, this is what their tax bill would look like. It would be phased in over three years, and that would be their tax increase over three years. Because we have the homestead tax credit program in place, the most, and ours is currently at 5%, the most it can increase each year is 5% on the Garrett County tax side piece. So this is what their assessment would be. Although it went up to 250, here it's going up to 216. Here, the cap at 210. And then it increases 5%, 5%, 5%, 5%. So it takes them to year five. So you're spreading out that increase over five years versus three years. What we're proposing is to reduce the homestead tax credit rate, or percentage, I should say, it's not a rate, a percentage. And I bumped into someone over the weekend, and they're like, "Yeah, you're lowering the rate." That's actually a good thing in this instance. So what it does is it slows down the process. It can only increase by 3% a year. You might ask, "Well, why is this going up to 210,000 then?" That's 5%. It's because the implementation of this takes a year. So if the commissioners approve this, and I think that's what we're proposing, and they're gonna probably approve this, it'll take into effect next July on that tax bill. So we put 210 here, and then it's going up 3%, 3%, 3%, 3%. So it spreads that increase out over seven years. So we felt like that was a really good benefit for the residents here in Garrett County. And those that aren't residents, we want them to become residents. We want them to stay here, spend their money here, pay the income tax here, because that'll help us. So that's one reason, I think, this is my personal opinion. It's one reason we want to give a break to the residents here in Garrett County. We want, we want them to stay here and not leave. So this is a summary of the revenue, then. This is just where all the money is going or coming in from. 87% obviously comes from taxes. The next 7% is coming from the state government. And then you can see investment income that we're projecting is third on the list. Moving on to expenses, because you're wondering, where's all the money that's coming in? Where's all that gonna be going to? And really, I want to, I want to focus on this change column here, and really, this percentage change. And really, the story I had to tell on that is inflation. I know it hasn't helped our situation at all. Last year, we were seeing inflation about 8.3%. I think April's report, CPI reported, that just came out, was right around 5, it was right under, I think it was 4.9. Since January 2021, if you combine inflation over that time period, it's about 14.6%. And if you remember, last year, our budget expenses went up about 6.75. So we took a brunt of inflation last year by increasing our expenses by 6.75. This year, we're having about 3.42% increase in our expenses. This is before capital. I backed out the operations from the capital. So two years combined, we're around 10%. Still under the CPI of about 14.6%. So I feel like we're doing pretty, pretty well compared to inflation CPI. I think the misconception out there is the government's exempt from inflation or we're immune to it. Like taxpayers don't expect to pay more, but the cost of services continue to go up and cost of materials, supplies and materials... to go up and cost of materials, supplies and materials do too. You've got to keep in mind too, that two of our largest functions of government are dependent on petroleum and petroleum-based products. Public safety with the sheriff's department, we've got some EMS staff here, they're, they're in the transportation business, obviously. And then of course, our roads department is highly petroleum-based with paving and fuel and all that. To give you a stat here, to pave the same amount of roads in twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four, it costs us about twenty-five percent more, or half a million dollars more than what it did two years ago. I was going to hone in on public works, I'll do that now since I'm giving you some public work stats. In this budget, public works, five hundred eighty-six thousand. We're planning on paving twenty-four miles of road, tar chipping thirty-one miles of road, that's comparable to last year. To give you an idea of what asphalt cost us, it's, if you look at every mile of road, it's about a hundred thousand dollars of material cost in that road. Another thing to keep in mind is we have fluctuating fuel prices. A dollar fluctuation in the fuel price either up or down costs us or saves us about four hundred thousand dollars. So that's a good stat to have. Our guys have almost six hundred eighty-two miles of roads to maintain, so that's, that's a lot of, a lot of miles to maintain. Couple other things to keep in mind that are cost increases, line striping. Who would have thought line striping would be expensive? It's doubled in price over the last two years. It's about seven hundred thousand dollars to line stripe the roads. So we took a hard look at that and, and we asked, what can we get by with line striping? What's absolutely necessary, the line stripe? If we just did the highly traveled roads and the roads that have safety concerns with fog and such, we got that number down to four hundred and seventy-five thousand. But in the past, if we would have done all the miles that we normally do, it would have been seven hundred thousand dollars this year. I mentioned fuel, abrasives, all these things in the roads department are increasing and we're still already showing about a two point nine nine percent increase in public works. So that's enough about inflation. Second, secondly, let me mention that attracting good employees and retaining them is still a challenge for us. I've been with the county going on twenty-six years coming this year. And last year, I reported that I've seen the highest turnover rate last year in history. We're breaking that this year. We've seen forty-eight terminations in the past two years. Combined, we've seen ninety-four terminations in county government. Government jobs used to be the jobs that everybody wanted. People would come, they would stay until they retired. We're not seeing that anymore. I believe we currently have about five positions vacant, and some of those are, most of those are professional positions. So what we've done, so we went to the commissioners, we said, instead of giving a COLA this year to all employees, we commit to doing a salary study to compare our employees' salaries to the market. That seems to be the thing that our colleagues in other counties are doing. Our colleagues from the east, our neighbors from the east, they just got through a salary study in February and they've implemented that salary study. So we've set money aside for that salary study and I think the commissioners are committed to doing a salary study for us. We hope to have that salary study implemented by no later than January first of two thousand twenty-four. Hope to have it done sooner than that. And again, I'll just mention things that factor into that is the minimum wage being accelerated to fifteen dollars an hour by January first. Also, I want to point out, a lot of the state agencies that we're funding, we're seeing their increases that we're funding by mandate, they're showing salary increases of six point five percent at a minimum. Let me point that out. If you listen to the state's attorney, Christian Mash, I think last month, gave his budget presentation, he was asking for a full-time attorney, he has a part-time attorney now. That was his request in the budget, the commissioners are approving that request. Looking at community health, you're not going to see this very often, zero percent increase. So there's a lot of distortions in this budget. I'll come back to this one because we really want to spend some time on the Garrett County Board of Education, zero percent, you'll probably never see that again on our side of the fence. But community health, I'll get back to that, community health, they were able to outsource their IT department, I think they gave it back to the state. They had significant savings, they did have significant increases in their overall budget, but they're able to absorb that through their IT savings and then what the state was contributing for the rest. So last year, at this time, I think community health was, this number was five point five percent. That's probably a normal number to look at. The rest of these are minimal increases. I mean, the percentages high dollars aren't, I have explanations for them, I can go over those if anybody's got any questions. I do want to hone in on economic development for a moment because you see a fifty-five point eight six percent increase, one point one million dollars. We've set aside about a million dollars in that category to help with our business development grant program. Also, it's included in there, I think Dwayne, who has left, is about three hundred thirty thousand, we're doubling the pathway for home ownership program to help address the affordable housing issues that we have. That three hundred thirty thousand dollars should help about sixty first-time home buyers. And then I think Dwayne has mentioned that his CDVG fund, if that was approved, would help supplement that program. Moving on to capital, let me go back, compare capital. Last year, we approved fourteen point two million dollars in capital, this year we're putting eight point four, so it's a reduction of five point seven, five point eight million dollars. Here's the capital that we had outlined, so these are maintenance, eight hundred ninety-five thousand, there's a list of items, public safety, we do have an ambulance in there, that's the majority of that, that's a fully, a fully immense with all the equipment, all the lights, all the medical equipment that it, that it takes, five hundred forty-one thousand. Public works is just routine equipment, eight hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred. We usually try to earmark about a million dollars for public works to keep up with everything. And then I want to point your attention here to the Board of Education, Southern Great Ban Park Project, commissioners have committed fourteen point four million dollars over the next four years and we're approving about five point two million in this budget. Get back real quick. Garrett College, Ruth Inlow Library, we've allocated five percent of our budget increase to that. And then Garrett County Board of Education, we need to park here for probably five or ten minutes and really go into that. I think, I see Allison Schweitzer from the Board of Ed's here, Finance Director. I think she's done an excellent job in, in her public meetings, really explaining the impact of the blueprint on education from her standpoint. And I think it's really driving a lot of the decisions and really proposals that she's making on her, her side. But on our side, we want to explain the local share and how that affects everything. So there's, the code says that we have to fund the Board of Education the greater of two things. It's the old maintenance of effort formula that everybody's familiar with, or the new blueprint, or what we're referring to as a local share. This past year, if we would have, if we'd done the, we did do, but under the maintenance of effort formula, we could have legally, by law, by mandate, reduced our local share to the Board of Education by one point three million dollars. That's under the maintenance of effort. This is the first year that the blueprint is higher than that number, so we fall under the blueprint or the local share. That figure, we could have reduced education by two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. I think that's the figure, two hundred thirty-three thousand dollars rounded, Allison missed. What the commissioners have done is they decided to flat fund and not reduce by two hundred and thirty-three thousand, we could have, but they decided to give them this allocation. Now, that doesn't mean that the Board of Education has less funding. What it means is, under the blueprint, it's funding a higher percentage than what the local is. And they're still getting, I think Allison can come correct me, I think about one point three, one point four million dollars additional, plus our two hundred thousand that we're given additional. So they have about roughly one point six million dollars of additional funding to work with. So because this is a complex subject and it's really driving all the decisions that we're making right now to keep the tax rate the same, I think it's important that the public understand how this is going to impact Garrett County. And it's really going to cripple us from a fiscal standpoint, I'm not looking at the program standpoint at all, it might be a great thing. I look at strictly the dollars of it from the local share and what taxpayers are paying, and it's really going to cripple Garrett County. So what we did, as I told our staff, I said, we really got to get a handle on how this is going to affect Garrett County from the local share. So I pointed one of our accountants, Cody Brill, to the task to take it, sift it through, build us a model. And we have the wealth side, we have those figures, I think, more so than the Board of Ed does. The Board of Ed from Allison's side, she's got the enrollment and those projections. We got together, put our heads together and we're sifting through this model together, working on it so we can really figure out the impact to Garrett County. So I wanted Cody to come and explain for a few minutes. It's really important that the taxpayers know how significant this is going to be for the future funding of Garrett County. All right, just want to start by thanking Mr. Weeks and the commissioners for giving me the opportunity to try, again, try to explain a really complicated new piece of law that affects us in a major way in a relatively short amount of time. Blueprint for Maryland's Future fundamentally changes not only how much we spend on education, but how we spend. They kind of start almost from a really micro level of how much does it cost to educate each individual child? It used to be a total enrollment number, there was an escalator attached to that, I'm going to do a maintenance of effort plan, but now they almost look, and you can see it's going to be a shooting fluid as well, of how much does it cost to educate each individual child in the summation of those children? And then how does that money kind of get split between state and local sources? If I say local for the duration of this presentation, I mean local as in our share, as a county, we send down the road to the Board of Ed, not necessarily what they receive. You're going to see some big numbers increasing, what we're calling local, but they might not necessarily in total be getting that money. So just as an example, we'll take a child, and we'll say, all K through twelve students get a foundation program. They are all eligible for that, there's a per pupil rate, where they say this is how much it should cost to educate that child. That rate per statute increases every year until twenty thirty-three, which is the current non-termination, that's how long that statute lasts. And then they'll look at a bunch of other, the state says up to twelve, there's kind of a bunch of major ones and a lot of lesser ones, they say it's up to twelve other possible funding sources that go into how much does it cost to educate that child? So their mindset behind this is very much one of equity. They look at if a child has a particular characteristic that disadvantages them as far as their learning and growth, they say they should allocate more resources to that child to kind of bring them up. So the biggest, we'll go through kind of quickly what they are, but the biggest is because it's re-education, those who are low-income students. So if a child is below the federal poverty line, they qualify for free and reduced tuition schools, they get an extra seventy-five, eighteen next year to go into that kind of funding formula. Couple other ones, we don't have very many, but we do have English as a second language, special education, that are a big bucket, and career in college ready, which per statute, they want every kid in Garrett County to be career and college ready by the conclusion of tenth grade. And if I don't do the granular level of this justice, please go watch Mrs. Schweitzer's presentation last week, she did a much better job. We're just coming at it from a local government piece on how this affects us and this is a broad citizen of Garrett County. So this is just an example of the foundation program. Again, all of K through twelve students fall into this number. There is a separate pre-K bucket that we can talk a little bit about later, but this is the big driver here. You can see, so we have, again, these are all projections, the most accurate, Miss Schweitzer, I'm sure she has her, her bloodstream, but these, this is a projection based on information that changes fairly regularly. This is based on relative wealth for us and the rest of the state, enrollment numbers, that's always constantly changing. If you're looking at what it'll cost next year, she has the best number for that, but we're kind of, what we're trying to do is project, got to take some assumptions of what it'll be five, six, seven, all the way up to nine, ten years from now. So, so this is an idea of the foundation program, so all of our students apply that are K through twelve, there's a per pupil rate, okay? And that gives you the total kind of funding liability for that program, okay? As you see, the rate, it increases every year, I just picked three out, they wouldn't all fit, but it starts about, the next year's going to be eighty-six, forty-two, it's going to go all the way to twelve through. Okay? And these are kind of all the different buckets, and again, this is just a projection, if you want to do a number, please look in the Schweitzer presentation, but, so we'll say we have, you know, thirty-four hundred students in Garrett County, K through twelve. There's a per pupil rate of that, so that's a total, okay? And total, it's very easy to understand and implement. And implementation, and kind of how it's split, you get to where you get some complexity. Okay, we have eighteen hundred, they call farm students, there's a rate for that for a total. Career in college ready, we talked about, special education, English, it's a smaller lumber, and then pre-K. So if you're in pre-K, you get a different, but it's a higher rate that's applied to them. So just have an idea of how the foundation piece hits, I'll go through them all, but this is the biggest, this is the largest. And this is really where a lot of the increase over the next ten years is coming from. So this is the state's formula per statute on how we get our local share in dollars. Again, local share meaning Garrett County commissioners allocated to the Board of Education here in Garrett County. I promise this is the full extent of the algebra that'll be featured in the presentation, but as you can see, they take the statewide enrollment, they take a per pupil rate, eighty-six, forty-two next year, continues to increase, they try to wait at fifty-fifty, and then they do a county local wealth in total and a state wealth in total. And that's not per, that's not per pupil or anything like that, that is a, that is a total number, okay? So this is kind of how ours breaks down on our number per twenty twenty-four, okay? The vast majority of it is real property taxes, seventy-five percent is driving the bus here on the, again, this is on the assessment itself. So they're looking at Garrett County's ability to raise funds, regardless of whether you actually raise those funds or not. Okay, the next biggest piece is another that comes next. For us, we rank lower on that. I think by, by the end of this current group two phase in, we're going to be, I think, forcing the state as far as real estate property tax assessment per capita. Okay, so you're going to see that drastically negatively affects us when you compare us to our peers around the state. The other thing I kind of wanted to point out with this is, I showed it in total, and we unfortunately have declining enrollment, and if that continues, the total program cost that the schools receive, if there's a declining enrollment, that number will go down. But the way that they figure out the, the local portion of that foundation has nothing to do with local enrollment at all. Again, they're looking at your wealth and they're saying what you can afford, whether you have a thousand or five thousand or ten thousand students, okay? So unfortunately, if you kind of take So unfortunately, if you kind of take a look at this formula again, statewide enrollment, the projection increased between a half and one and a half during this time period. Per pupil, it's going to increase about 50% from now until 2033. We know over the next three years, we are going to outpace the state on our local wealth by a pretty significant margin. And then after that, the state will probably outpace us on a year-to-year margin, but likely won't make up those gains we're going to make over the next three years. So you can see, baked into the rate before we even get into any numbers, by nature, this increases. By nature, this increases. By nature, well, in reality, this has got to increase more than this, at least in the short term. So here's a county for other subgroups, you know, everybody applies to the foundation, but you have another group of buckets that a student could be a part of to get an additional funding source. They're split, they all have kind of unique formulas, the percentages are a little bit different, but they're pretty close, they're about 60%. And when we look at those numbers, those are based off of our county wealth, our local wealth, per pupil, when compared to the rest of the state. So post-phase-in, when we get group two fully phased in, our assessments will be fourth, okay? Part of that, high assessments, lower enrollment, okay? And you can tell, and this is a better question for your state legislator, but who's at the top? The really small counties, the counties that have a high dependence on tourism industry, aging populations, that's who's paying kind of the bulk of that local share. Those guys you see, kind of our Western Maryland counterparts, they're all the way at the bottom, okay? They have more people, they have more students, they don't necessarily have the high assessment ratio that we do. So here's a good idea of this percentage, again, if you want a real, true dollar to quote, please get that from Miss White for next year. It's about 60%, there's a cap on compensated in. We will never fall below that cap unless something drastic happens to our wealth formula. The other ones are relatively fluid, and I will say, as our assessments continue to increase, our enrollment continues to decrease, this number will probably get less favorable, which means these numbers get less favorable going forward. There are some other statewide grants, concentration property, if you have a lot of low-income kids in school, you get an additional funding source, but it comes with a lot of additional services you have to provide. And then they have different incentives for advanced education for employers, and a transportation grant, which does not pay for all the transportation, I'm sure. And then there's a blueprint transition grant they gave every county that's actually in statute, and it decreases. That's why I think that made 2030, does that sound right? So that's how we get the total cost of education and how it splits in Garrett County. Like I said, as we go forward, the foundation will continue to pick up more and more as a percentage of that total value figure. And all the other categories are the same way. If enrollment continues to decline, that wealth per pupil will continue to go up, and I mean, these percentages unfortunately will continue to go up as well. Here's our projection, this is based on a lot of assumptions. Again, we know in the next three years what our assessment's going to do, what our local wealth's going to do, that a pretty good idea of our state income taxes, or our local income taxes is going to do. We do have to take some assumptions, like we're conservative in those assumptions, as far as how it will relate to the rest of the state. But based on those assumptions that we made, we're fearful that by 2033, the total increase of money that we spend down, or we send down the street will increase by about 13.5 million dollars, and that's almost a 50% increase, or what we're doing today.
So one thing I wanted to point out, Cody, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this year, our local funding is 53% compared to the state. And that's going to increase to almost 60% by 2033, so.
Actually, if I do want to add one thing, I think this is really important. I said it changes how much we spend, but also how we spend in that if we have 100 comp ed students, let's say it, that's our number too. 75% of that money has to go to those students at their school. So the amount of flexibility that our board had, the power dynamic has shifted largely from the counties around the state to Annapolis. A lot of the flexibility they had before, they don't necessarily have anymore, okay? We have a lot of low enrollment schools that our bigger schools kind of help support, and under blueprint, that's going to make that strategy a lot more difficult. That's a really important piece to understand of it, is when they say, "How much does it take to educate that child?", they mean that child, that school, that program. I think you have 25% of that number as the cover your other costs of administration and the transportation and state cover. So again, that's a really important piece, and it's going to be fluid. As enrollment changes, as people qualify for different categories, it's going to change. That makes their job down the street as far as finance and administration pretty difficult. I just wanted to add that, because that's a really important piece that the folks should understand.
Yeah, I think Allison's done a great job explaining that side, but I don't think people have really listened to her. In her defense, their hands are tied, they have about 25% flexibility in their overall budget, because it's really, the funding's got to follow the kid, got to follow the school, and they have to prove that it did, so. So this is our education funding, operating funding up until 2024, okay? And this is what we're expecting for the future. You'll see the phase-in, this is the phase-in of our assessments, it's the wealth piece that Cody was explaining. So we're looking at education funding in the next three years, starting in fiscal year 2025, going up about 6.6 million dollars. I think we're pretty accurate on that assessment in our projections, so I wanted to point that out. By the year 2023, it's going to be that high, well, 33. Yeah, what'd you say the percentage was?
47%.
47% by 2033. So in our financial model, the forecasting model that we put together, we have all the revenues, all the expenses, and we forecast that out into the future. This is where we start to have a problem. This red area here is where we start to see a budget shortfall. And in fact, in 2029 to 2033, we're looking at about a $4 million shortfall just for education funding. That doesn't include all the other departments that we have to fund to keep government going. That's just education. So what that $4 million equates to roughly, just use rough figures, it's eight cents on the tax rate. So you can, hopefully we're wrong on this, and hopefully we didn't drag this out a little longer. Hopefully, we were ultra-conservative on some of our revenue projections, but what that means is, we do not cut expenses, or we do not increase our revenue stream, or a combination thereof. The only thing we have to go on is the tax rate. This is a bill we have to pay. We don't have an option out of this bill, so we'll have to pay it. And again, if those things don't happen, you're going to look for two cents, two cents, two cents, two cents during that time. And then, again, there's a couple of factors in this blueprint. Like, they came up and hardcoded this blueprint before inflation, okay? So now they're actually talking about these figures per student like they're low. So I look for the legislators to propose an increase, so it could make everything even worse on the local side. Keep in mind too, that we made a commitment for capital funding of 14.4 million over the next four years. That is somewhat baked in here, what's not baked in here, I think, the blueprint. I think it's inevitable that something's got to change down the street. I don't like to say that, but from a fiscal side, it's just unaffordable to keep everything open. And I think the blueprint forces the Board of Education's hand to make changes, because I know there's a lot of public pressure, I've heard it down the street, "Keep my school open, keep my school open." But from a fiscal standpoint, we can't, we as county government can't even afford the blueprint, let alone if we keep these schools open, they're going to come to the commissioners or somewhere and ask for additional funds. And I'm saying from my seat that I sit in as the fighting director, it's just unaffordable for Garrett County. So we'll just have to tax everybody to death. And again, we're going to do everything we can to keep our expenses down and monitor that. We hope we have enough money to get us through this period, but that's just the 33 and the projections, a lot of things can change. I understand that in nine years, but we do have to plan ahead and plan for this. I think, and then I want to point out, if they do make changes, I mean, we had it in the back of our mind, because we've talked to some of the people down the street of a bigger project on the northern end of the county, and it would have been similar to the southern end of the county, which is costing us 14.4. And I'll mention, that's on a 90-10 split, if that changes, it could really get bad for us, so. Hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I want to be realistic about this too, and I hope everybody understands. So this is the breakdown of our expenditures. See, education's 36% of our budget, public works is 20% of our budget, public safety 16, and we have capital in here. Really, the only place we have to cut maybe is general government, it makes up about 7% of our budget. I know a lot of people, they say, "Cut the roads, cut the roads." If you're cutting dollars out of the roads to pay for education, you will see a significant drop in service. Like, you would have to cut the roads department in half, and then they wouldn't be plowed, they wouldn't be maintained, they wouldn't be paved regularly. So we can't get behind on that, because if you kick maintenance and that thing down, those things down the road, it'll catch up with you in the end, and then it's too hard to catch back up. So I just want to summarize now and go over the highlights. These are all the things we just talked about. Operating Cavalry Quest came in at 1.9 million over projected revenue, so we were able to cut 1.9. A lot of people think, "Oh, you got all this money, you're just going to prove everything." No, we still go through the same process, we still scrutinize expenses, we still cut things that we don't feel is necessary. So we were able to cut 1.9 million out of the budget. We're proposing a 91.8 million operating and an 8.4 million capital budget for a total of a $100.2 million budget, capital and operating. We funded the outside operations, or the operations of outside agencies, an additional 524,000 this year in this budget. And we funded additional 2.5 million of capital for these outside agencies, bringing the combined total of funding of 47.5. That's almost, well, it's about 47, 48% of the budget just for that, outside agencies. Funded the Board of Education 232,000, or the required local share mandate. In addition, we committed to funding 14.4 million capital plan over the next four years, which this budget includes 5.2 million for the Southern Great Van Project. You're probably going to get sick of hearing me talk about education, but that's going to be our story for the years to come. Probably replay this same thing next year at this time. Biggest future challenge is education funding, projecting 13.5 million dollar increase in operations over the next nine years. Next three years, we're projecting 6.6 million dollars in operating. Every 1.2 million will be invested in broadband and local business development. Physician was added for state's attorney. Investment in public safety employees compensation, commitment and salary study to address general government compensation. No real property tax rate increase, the rate will remain at $1.056. No increase to the water and sewer ad valorem tax rates. In fact, we're seeing a reduction of eight of the 12 sanitary districts, their rates will go down. No income tax rate increase, rate will remain at 2.65, making Garrett County the third lowest in the state. No reserves were used to balance this budget, no new general fund debt, and we're maintaining the 10% rainy day fund. And if you have any comments, this will be open until we approve the budget on June the 5th, right?
Yes.
You can send your comments to comments@garettcounty.org. With that, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, before we go to any questions or comments from the public, I just want to thank Scott, Cody, and the whole finance department team for working on this. I think the message is certainly that we as collectively have some challenges, and we have a lot of decisions that need to be made. To Butch's point earlier, there's a tipping point to how much the county can afford, how much the people that live in our county can afford. The unfortunate thing is, everything driving this budget, for the most part, is things outside of our control. We don't do the assessments, the state does. Then they base the funding formula that they mandate on us off the assessments that they do. We don't have any control over any of that, and the accelerated expense of public education is significant. And we're going to talk about it year after year after year. People don't understand it, they get real emotional when you start talking about education, especially in the school that their kid attends. But I think they did a pretty good job of illustrating, when you look at those substantial increase in costs, and we don't have any control over that, that's just the way that it is. The unfortunate thing is, every county in the state is just like us. They're all grasping and grappling with how they're going to pay for it. And if you've been following statewide anything that's going on, Montgomery County proposed a 10% property tax increase, strictly to fund education. And if you know anything about Montgomery County, you know they're a lot wealthier than we are, and they need 10% increase in property tax revenue to offset that. Now, they're in a big controversy over that down there, and I won't wade into their politics, they're going to have to make that up somehow. But in that conversation, Baltimore City's significantly underwater on what they owe, in a whole different situation. They're poorer than we are, yet their bill's going up significantly, and they don't know how they're going to pay for it. They're going to be in a big budget battle down there too, I'm sure. No one is immune to it. So in my mind, I would think that every county is going to go back to their state representatives and say, "We're having trouble paying our local share of this amount of money." What the state just did, because they underestimated what their share of that bill is going to be too, they took 900 million dollars and moved it into their education fund, because they know they're going to be short in a shorter period of time than what we're going to be short. So they know they've underfunded it. They just got a lot more zeros behind their dollars they can move around, so they've got a bigger cushion than we do. Instead of the state, instead of the powers that be looking at it to try to amend the bill, amend the law, to make it less of a financial burden on the local governments, the state is going to get a lot of pressure next year, and I think apply some pressure to the locals to increase their local funding. And Scott brought that up. I got an email today from some of my colleagues across the state that the direction that looks like the state's going to go is they're going to tell the counties, "You got to pay even more, because we know we're short." So those numbers are probably going to get worse. And it's really imperative for the citizens of this county to educate themselves on what the blueprint does, because all of the decisions that we make as a county are going to be based off of that for the next several years. It's an uncomfortable conversation, because you're going to talk about raising taxes, which no one wants to do. You're going to talk about closing schools, which no one wants to do. You're going to talk about cutting the funding of county government entities like county roads, sheriff's department, whatever the case may be, which nobody wants to do, or, and/or, you're going to be talking about cutting staff at the school, because there's no way to make all of this work. And there's absolutely nothing we can do to change the funding formula. So we're stuck with this bill, and I think that the first thing we all have to do to get preachy, I know, and I apologize, is understand that this is real and it's not going to change. And so you've got a couple- this is real and it's not gonna change. And so, you've got a couple of options. You can cut services from the county to raise revenue to give more money to the school system. You can cut things from the school system to make their money go further within their budget, or you can raise tax. None of them are good options, but those are the only options that we have. So, it's imperative that people that care about this, and everyone should, pay attention to the school board meetings, see what's being said, try to understand what their vision and philosophy is moving forward, and pay attention to what the state does, so they know what we're faced with as commissioners, because this is very difficult. It's extremely difficult. All I can tell you is, we pledge to be as open and transparent as we can, so that we can just tell you what we're dealing with, and we expect to get criticism for it. No one wants to cut the roads. No one wants the police to be defunded here. No one wants to cut education, and no one wants to raise taxes. So, whatever decision is made, it's gonna not be popular. We understand that. So, all we can do is just continue to try to keep people in tune with the conversation, try to explain what we're faced with. And on top of that, that doesn't even touch the capital stuff. All of our schools are getting older, and we haven't put a major investment in any schools until recently. Grantsville's just redone. We're just about to do this Southern End project, which has probably been put off for way too long, and none of the other buildings that we have have been touched in twenty years. So, when you look at all of the other schools, I don't care which one it is, the two high schools, Crelin, Swan Meadow, Friendsville, Accident, Yoclades, none of them have been touched in years. If we're gonna, we're gonna have to put money into those schools at some point in time. So, that's gonna be even more money that we're gonna be faced with, and, and even if they close some schools, there's still schools that are gonna need money, because they're gonna have to keep some of them open. We have to provide an education to our students. That is a constitutional mandate. We can't close them all down. That's not an option. So, we're gonna have to fund some capital improvements to that as well. So, it is a little bit doom and gloom. I, I do want to draw our attention to a positive, that even faced with inflation at, at a significant rate, even with the increase, and we're talking about these increase in costs and so on and so forth, we were able to trim the total budget from last year to this year, which I think is a significant accomplishment. And I do want to piggyback off of what Scott said, because I think it's very important. The nationwide labor shortage, which is really significant in Garrett County, it's really significant anywhere. No one can find enough workers. Anywhere you look, people need more employees. Garrett County Government's no different. We are losing people left and right to private industry, because as private industry can't fill their jobs, they're increasing their salaries, they're increasing them at a rate higher than we could ever, as far as government is concerned, pay them. So, we have County Roads guys leave, because they can go drive for Coke or Pepsi and make twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year more than what they can make for Garrett County Government. I don't blame them one bit for doing that. Everybody's gotta do what they need to do to take care of their families, and then when we advertise that job, we're not getting applicants, because the people that are content where they are right now in the private sector aren't now applying for county government jobs. So, to fill those spots, you know, we need to react to that as well, because you can't plow, even if you fund it completely, if you don't have the employees in County Roads to be out there paving and plowing, that's a cut to service, even if you're funding it, if you can't find the folks to do it. So, if you are a second homeowner watching this, and you see that we have the third lowest income tax in the state, and you can qualify for our property tax program here, you may want to think about becoming a full-time resident, because it can help you out and it can help us out. And if you have kids, more the better. Bring them all on, we got a great school system. But, yeah, and we're, we're putting money in the house. So, I don't know if anybody else has anything to share.
I got a question, Scott, and maybe I'll put you on the spot here, and I apologize. You know, we're, we're being asked by several people to lower the tax rate. By not doing so, how long do you think it will be before we have to raise that rate by keeping it the same now?
Yeah, that, that was on that, that was on that graph?
With the?
It was, what was the year? Twenty-nine? Two thousand twenty-nine. Keep, we'll keep our sights on that, two thousand twenty-nine. Like, be able to prolong it a little longer to two thousand thirty?
And that, that's, that's what we're looking at here, is to, instead of maybe backing off this year a little bit, and then hitting everybody with a tremendous tax rate later, trying to keep it more on an even keel. And that's what we're trying to do. You know, it's all projection. It's all, you know, I understand that if these taxes get so high for second homeowners, they can leave this county. Drops our combinations tax, it, it just drops everything. These projections could go the other way on us. So, that's why we're trying to hold this where we're at, so that we're not gonna hit somebody with twice the tax here four or five years down the road, or maybe sooner.
Yeah, what I, what I found to mention, Commissioner, is, in our model, when Group Two reassesses in three years, we build in a half a percent increase. Our fear is, it could go the other way, like it did in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, where the assessments dropped, the county lost four million dollars overnight, I mean, in one year. So, our fear that that could happen, that's in the back of our mind. We hope it doesn't happen. I don't really think it will. So, in our model, we projected a slight increase on that Group Two, three years from now, when it reassesses, I think we put a half a percent increase in that.
Thanks, Scott.
Commissioners, I have a?
I'll piggyback on Larry here a little bit. I, I think that's really the, the way we looked at it, the fiscally irresponsible way, was to, to maintain where we're at, is to not, I, I've been calling it like a, a tax death sentence later on. It would just hurt our tourism industry so bad with the huge increase, that I think we just maintain, and that's, that's was our main reasoning behind this decision.
All right. Having said that, questions, comments from the audience?
What is the, what's our good headline?
Go ahead, Butch.
What's, is there a difference, and what is the difference now between the delinquent taxes and what they were prior to what's happening here? In other words, I understand your position. Because the money's up there, you can't spend it, okay? So, delinquent taxes, how are we setting on them now? And I'm looking, I'm not accusing anybody, but one thing just sticks in my mind is some of the ways, and I know you didn't designate this, it came from downstate, but I call that irresponsible leadership. When you taking up three million dollars in two football fields, when we're looking at a situation like this, when there was other methods to have made that right, and that's fine, if they like sports, that's great. I don't have an issue with that. But when we're looking at situations like this, we have to make some responsible decisions. And so, what happens then, if everything starts downhill, and you can't meet these requirements? Where does the money come from then? What does our illustrious representatives downstate say you want to do then?
Well, what I can tell, to answer the last part of your question first, the way it's been explained to us is, if we can't meet the obligation, then the state will withhold, withhold some of their money, up to twenty-five percent as well. So, not paying it isn't really an option unless we're willing to take that. And I understand, that's not what you're saying. You're saying if we can't pay it, then what, what's the, what's the punishment, if you will, and it's that the state will withhold part of their fund. You ask a good question as well about delinquent taxes, and Scott, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, I'm sure we can get it.
I do, but I'm gonna, Jeff, respond to that. Jeff's?
I mean, we obviously haven't seen any, any major rate increases, but actually, delinquent taxes have actually come down over the last several years. There's been no, no significant change, especially coming out of COVID, we switched to the online method. Like you're saying, it's great, and it's just part of, part of the, the annotated code. Again, if, if people don't pay them, we have to auction them off after two years. When I went online, we basically don't have no sales anymore, so technically, there are no delinquent taxes. So, from a strictly financial position, it's not gonna change anything. Again, I'm not saying it's good, because we don't want to sell people property, that's the last thing we're gonna do. But again, the effects of, of these rate increases haven't seen at all.
There hasn't been a significant increase, stands what you're saying.
Correct. But again, this, we really haven't raised taxes for years. I mean, it wouldn't take effect for a couple of years anyway, but unfortunately, you know, somebody's gonna buy a taxi. Delinquents are kind of a thing of the past. I mean, it's, we switched during COVID, we switched from a live auction to an online, basically all property sale pretty much at this point. Again, not, not a positive thing, but from a financial side, it gives us the opportunity to pay our bills or pay the bills to the state, meaning these bills.
You know, another important thing, because I've been harping on this for nine years now, and I think Scott finally listened, because the ad valorem taxes across the county, none of them are going up.
Right.
And eight of them are being decreased, and that's significant. And I, I think over the last several years, all of them, or at least most of them have been cut to some degree. So, we've been able to chip away on those ad valorms as well, and some of the cuts this year actually are significant. Deep Creek, was Deep Creek or Friends, one of them's going down a fair amount.
Casas Ridge.
Casas Ridge, yeah, is going down dramatically. That's significant.
Yeah, a lot of that, obviously, is the assessments and all of this stuff, and add on what I'm pushing, as you were saying. This is positive news, but positive news for the next couple of years too, as, as these assessments get phased in, people are paying more with the ad valorem. We've been pretty responsible, Scott and staff as well, refinancing over the last several years. We actually refinanced them back in two thousand and twelve, which is gonna save us, you know, probably ten million dollars in the end, where we had these loans that were forty years. We were able to refinance and keep the same rate, and the majority of this debt will be paid off in ten years, where it would have been thirty years from now. So, I, I would anticipate that the, the, these systems, you'll continue to see decreases, at least over the next three years. That's definitely positive.
So, I tip the cap to you, Scott, for making that.
That's all Jeff.
Jeff. I didn't want to give Jeff any credit. Mr. Mo?
Just a few comments. Recently, the elected Board of Education declined to close two schools, as recommended by the superintendent and her staff. That is gonna cost, what, about, close to a million dollars in safe revenue, eight hundred and forty-seven something, you know? I don't know what their fiscal discipline is, if they, if they have it, or even if they're listening, I hope so. But that's a major, major disappointment, given what we have seen here with this presentation. And Scott, if I'm correct, the figures from the state were generated prior to the inflation.
Yes.
Okay. So, it's gonna hit us and everybody bang hard. And then the elected Board of Education thinks, has a gall to ask the Board of County Commissioners to fix their elevator when the Board of County Commissioners leases them the building for one dollar a year. That's, that is, that takes gumption, you know? That's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. I mean, and there are members of the Board of Education that think a major employee will bring in more families and children. That ain't gonna happen. I mean, we are baby boomers. I'm a baby boomer, and I've gone bust. I've retired. Our generation has retired. We're not generating any more children. It's a two-family income to support a child needed? I mean, it's ridiculous. I think the Board, the elected Board members need to undergo a physical understanding test, because they have been major disappointed. They're gonna be living off their accumulated unobligated funds with this recent decision, and they have another major decision to make, which is the grade band alignment for the Northern End. If they don't do that, you'll have two different systems at one end of the county and the other end of the county, and that's gonna be a nightmare administratively. I think we need to establish some reasonable qualifications to hold that off. Sorry, that's my two cents. The other thing is, there's, most recently, we have a two point eight percentage unemployment rate in this county as currently the latest recorded. That's unheard of. I mean, I go back, you go back to the days when Bolshimone laid off, and we had seventeen, eighteen percent unemployment. We don't have that problem anymore. Closet Man came in, and they were great. We were very lucky to get Closet Man. We're gonna have, they're gonna close, and they're gonna lay off a hundred and seventy-two people, but they will have no problem finding work, because everywhere you go, down the road, in the stores, they're all looking for help. We're not gonna get any more people in this county unless something changes with the Board of Education. I mean, education is a marketing tool for economic development, and I'm sorry, we don't have now, not with the, well, not with the current order. Thank you, that's my two cents, I'm off my post.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Another thing that I've noticed over the years, some of the schools that's been closed, were still in use. So, what was the reason for closing the school, if it's still good enough for administrative offices or other things? What has that cost the county in revenue? And I'm not trying to down anybody, but there does have to be some sense of fiscal responsibility from people that's making these decisions, instead of just saying, "Well, here's what we have to have," because sooner or later, like I say, the well runs dry. And in what we're going through in the country nationwide today, it's just beginning. I'm sorry, and we have a, a segment of politicians that seems to think they can talk their way out of what's going to happen, and it's, it's going fast.
Anyone else?
I just have one question.
Yes.
So, you said that they're allocating fourteen million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand over the next four years for, for that core capital. Only five point four was allocated in the Southern. What's the?
For this year.
For this year?
That project rolls out over multiple fiscal years.
Okay, so that's five point four for this year and the next year?
Correct. Southern Middle School, Allison, the, which is really a Bradford project, is, is fourteen million roughly for, just for that project, correct? And I know there's some other things. We gotta do a couple minor things at the high school to get it ready to move, but that project is that total amount, and it rolls over a couple of fiscal years. That's a good, I'm glad you asked that for Claire. That, that's a good question.
But it's between Southern Middle School facility and Southern High School.
Right.
Yeah, it's like a forty million dollar project.
Well, yeah, and, and that project, as Scott alluded to, on the ninety-ten split, it's really a forty-some million dollar project, and we're putting fourteen billion in. So, you know, the state's putting a lot in as well. Yep. Good question. Any other comments or questions? All right. Well, that concludes the budget presentation. Again, we can take comments all the way up until the fifth, at which time, at our meeting, we will adopt the budget. Appreciate everybody's attention and comments and concern. Appreciate everybody's attention and comments and concern, and we'll see you all on the fifth. Thank you.